A city council meeting for the city of Tuolleton. We're going to start tonight's meeting in our traditional manner with the Pledge of Allegiance. It's going to be led tonight by Council Reyes. So if you'll all please join me, put your hand on your heart. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Reyes. We have a few announcements this evening. The first one is our public health announcement that will be shared by Council Brooks.
So the latest update, just to a reminder, we're heading into the winter season and there's been two past years of mild, milder flu symptoms. So they anticipate flu symptoms to be less mild this season. So please consider getting a flu shot when you get the vaccine. And due to that, there was a little piece here that I wanted to read. Infectious diseases spread more easily when people spend more time indoors during colder weather. As a result, cases of COVID-19 and the flu are expected to increase starting in November. After two years of mild flu seasons, experts expect flu cases to rise to levels experienced in the years before the pandemic. While we are better positioned this year than the previous two years with updated COVID-19 vaccines, boosters, treatments, and a level of protection from previous infections, COVID-19 remains the third leading-ish cause of death in the United States, the third leading cause of death in the United States. Factor in the anticipated return of the flu, and we may be in for another challenging winter. So just a reminder for people to be protecting themselves, get their booster shots, and know that just because maybe I might not be as vulnerable as some of my older neighbors or some of my less fortunate in health neighbors, that I can do things to protect other people, like wear my mask indoor in healthcare settings. There's also a comic book for kids that they've put out to help with people that are having a hard time with the kids feeling comfortable being vaccinated, and it's in several languages, including Arabic, Korean, and all, some languages that I don't even know how to pronounce. So take a look at that. It's kind of cool that they have a comic book for kids to make the vaccine shots easier. That's that out of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list of announcements is a very special ceremony, and I'm absolutely thrilled to say that the next item on our agenda is going to be the swearing in of our new police chief, Greg Pickering.
I'm Sherilyn Lombos. I'm city manager here for the city of Tuolleton. And back in June, I introduced Greg Pickering as the interim police chief. And it is my pleasure tonight to announce that I have made the official appointment to police chief, taking away the interim title. Greg has tackled the interim assignment with his usual gusto. He has been a strong, energetic, and positive leader at a time when that is so needed and important. Being in law enforcement is, at any level, is not for the faint of heart. And the responsibilities are heavy, and I am proud of our Tuolleton Police Department, and I know you are too, up and down the chain of command. They take their responsibility seriously. They care about the community. They strive to serve. Greg understands better than most the challenges this job entails. Greg was raised right here in Tuolleton and began his career right here at the Tuolleton Police Department as an explorer. He moved to the city of Tigard. They got to train him up for a few years, and then we hired him back in 2005 as a patrol officer. He has held many of the special assignments in the Tuolleton Police Department and jobs, including sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. Greg has a heart for the department and a heart for this community. While the responsibility is high, Greg's passion, energy, and commitment are up to that challenge. It is my honor to administer the oath of office to Greg in front of you, his family, colleagues, and the community. With that, stand up. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Greg Pickering.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The ordinances of the city of Tuolleton.
The ordinances of the city of Tuolleton.
And the rules and regulations of the Tuolleton Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Tuolleton Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
In the best of my will.
In the best of my will.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think we have some individual words of congratulations from counselors this evening to commend you on your new job appointment. Counselor Hillier, did you want to?
Woohoo! Well, I kind of know you a little bit from the police foundation, the Community Police Foundation, and I've just been so impressed with the ideas you've had already to make our police department better, to make our community better, and your outreach. I'm really looking forward to having you as our new police chief. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, and I'm really looking forward to working with you. Counselor Sacco?
Congratulations. It is a difficult job to be a police officer and to be the leader of all of our police officers. Thank you so much for taking on the task, and couldn't think of a better person.
Thank you. Counsel Brooke?
I too, as I think on this day, as the longest-serving member of the Tuolleton Community Police Foundation, even though Counsel Pratt is our president, I'm super thrilled to have the opportunity to get to know you better before this appointment and promotion, and to see how you've worked your way all the way through all the ranks. To me, I think that puts you in such a great position to be able to see through the eyes of many of the officers, and I can see that already in the programs you've stood up that we're supporting through the foundation. Just want to remind people to buy duckies for the raffle for the pumpkin fest, but I do want to say that, that, that watching you stand up, especially when I think about the extra testing for healthcare for police officers, and just the caring deep spirit that you have for the job, it's, it's just a, and it's hard to say goodbye to old people, too. So it's like, it makes me feel good that I'm really excited about this, not just like sad about losing somebody that I was close to before. So thank you again for stepping up.
Well, congratulations. I think in the 12 years we've worked together, my gosh, it's a long time. I mean, I've always known that you are a man of immense capability, immense heart, and immense dedication to the department and to this community, and I can't think of a better person to be serving as our police chief. And I'm just so deeply honored that it happened while I was still serving on council, so I got to be here for it. Congratulations, best of luck, and you have, I don't know how to even quantify the amount of good wishes that are coming your way as you start your new position. So thank you so much. Oh, yeah, please.
Sorry, that caught me off guard, which doesn't happen very often. I was just so excited for you. But I also want to say, as a grandmother and sister-in-law of a police officer, people in law enforcement, I'd like to say also a thank you to the friends and family and support system of Chief Pickering, because I do know what that looks like and what that feels like, and I don't know that you could have a better support system based on what I see tonight. So thank you to all of you.
Oh, yes, and our esteemed mayor, for whom I'm filling in this evening, Mayor Bubinick?
Good evening. Good evening, Chief Pickering. This promotion is very well-deserved, all the years of service you've been on our community. In the years as a counselor, and these last four years as a mayor, I know in speaking with the Tigard and Tuolleton police officers, that you have the respect of both departments, not just ours, which is very difficult to achieve. You're very well thought of in both departments. And most importantly to me, you're very well-respected and liked by the community. You're very approachable. You listen to people's concerns, and you do something about it, which most people are sometimes surprised by, that the police, the chief of police is so approachable and gets things done for the community in a timely manner, and that, you know, that's something I very much appreciate about you.
Well, wonderful, and congratulations on your new position, and we look forward to seeing you out in the community and all the community events that I know you'll be helping us with in the near future. So thank you. Thanks. Next, we have a consideration of a proclamation declaring October 23rd to 31st, the 2022 Red Ribbon Week in the city of Tuolleton. And I believe Counselor Hillier is going to be reading the proclamation, and I think we have some special guests from LEAP here today, if they'd like to come up.
So, thank you, everyone. I would like, I'm honored to have this opportunity to read this proclamation. I thought about spicing it up a little bit, but I thought we'll leave it where it is because our student leaders hadn't had a chance to be the ones to alter it, so we'll do that for next year. But here we go. Proclamation declaring October 23 through 31, 2022, Red Ribbon Week in the city of Tuolleton. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Week Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Week Campaign will be celebrated during Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through 31. And whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, seniors, service organizations, seniors are aging task forces, who we mean here in Tuolleton, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Tuolleton does hereby proclaim October 23 through 31, 2022, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community, introduced and adopted this 10th day of October 2022, city of Tuolleton, Oregon. So we would love to hear a little bit, maybe more, about the student group at the high school that's supporting this work and our community coalition that actually several people in this room who are no longer wearing a uniform helped start in our community.
Hello, City Council President Grimes, and council members and council staff. I am Lily Story. I am the vice president of LEAP. LEAP is a student-led organization working in prevention and education about substance misuse within our community. We do a lot of very fun events. Of course, our main attraction today is Red Ribbon Week, which our vice, which our co-president, Bergen, will go over soon as he's done handing those out. LEAP stands for Leadership Education Advocacy and Prevention, and we work with our community to kind of uphold all of these tenets.
So yeah, I am Bergen, and I'm just going to kind of give you guys some information about Red Ribbon Week. So we celebrate Red Ribbon Week to commemorate the memory of Enrique Kiki Camaro, who was a DEA agent who worked in Mexico to bust drug cartels. In 1985, he was kidnapped on his way to have lunch with his wife, and was brutally tortured and then killed. Along with the commemoration of his life, the Red Ribbon Week Campaign also stands to educate people about drug misuse and prevention in their communities.
Within your bags, you will find a fire in both English and Spanish about Kiki Camaro. You will find a quick blurb about all of our events, which includes the Wicked Wellness Run, CABCA, and a town hall we are planning to educate about the dangers of opioid use, a webcam recover, a fire for our Wicked Wellness Run, and a Red Ribbon Week proclamation. We encourage you to join in our events, and if you have any further questions, feel free to ask now.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Counselor Sacco?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you so much for coming today and educating us, and for all the work that you do within your community and for the entire community. So thank you very much for your advocacy. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Counsel Brooks?
Yes, thank you so much. And it's good to learn more about this, and I guess my question is, is there, is there a place to get a red ribbon?
Not that we are aware of, but you could stop by our office at Byram, and I'm sure we probably have some.
Oh. Thank you. And I just think it's great that you're bringing awareness to this. I've worked with a lot of people who have dealt with addiction and families with addiction, and both in public life and also people's families that are involved with Washington County Community Corrections, and, and have helped a lot of people. So it's a family disease, it's a community disease, and it's good that you're raising awareness about this, and at such a young age. So congratulations for your insight and for your service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have other communications?
Just, just thank you for, you know, taking your time and the effort in educating the community and, you know, helping solve their lives.
I'd just like to emphasize the fact that they're a prevention coalition, or that's what they're focused on, is educating and advocacy, so the people, people choose healthy coping lifestyles if they're aware of them, instead of getting down the path into needing support for an addiction. Not that that isn't important, but that is what our focus is. Really proud to get to be their public advisor. Very mama bear.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, thank you so much for coming tonight. It was great. And then, did you want to put a plug in for the date of the wicked run?
Yes, of course.
And how people might find out more information if they want to participate?
The Wicked Wellness Run is October 29th at Byram Elementary School from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. You can register today at tuoltontogether.org/events. We have a costume contest for all ages. We're going to have a lot of very fun events with prizes, and there's going to be a photo booth, and it's just a lot of fun that helps raise awareness for prevention.
Great. Well, thank you for sharing that. Thank you, guys, for coming. I know it's sometimes a little nerve-wracking to come with all these people, but we appreciate you, guys, being here and all the hours that you volunteer. And I love the new name. I like the LEAP name. I think that that's really great, and I think it really reflects what you, guys, are trying to do, kind of take it to a whole new level. Mayor Bubinick, did you have something that you'd like to add?
No, I just encourage people to sign up for the event I attended last year, and it's a lot of fun for the youngsters and families, so make sure you sign up.
Excellent. Well, thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate it, and good luck with the event coming up here in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation declaring the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolleton, and that's going to be shared by Counselor Sacco with us tonight.
And I'm very proud to read this proclamation tonight. As a survivor of domestic violence, I, if anybody's out there listening that is maybe in that situation, you know, I just want to say that there is hope, and that I understand that when you're leaving, it is the most vulnerable stage in a domestic violence situation. And even after you leave, that, there are residual effects for the rest of your life. So I'm very proud to read this today, and proud that we are proclaiming that the month of October in 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tuolleton. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, socioeconomic levels, religions, backgrounds, beliefs, and abilities, but often has a disproportionate effect on communities and groups impacted by inequality. And whereas domestic violence includes physical, emotional, social, sexual, spiritual, financial, and digital abuse, and can occur between family members, intimate partners, and within dating relationships. And whereas more than one in three women and one in four men in the United States report having experienced domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, or physical assault by an intimate partner during their lifetimes. And whereas domestic violence impacts vulnerable victims, including children, as approximately 50% of Washington County children who are child abuse victims also live in home with a domestic violence. And whereas in 2020, the Family Justice Center served a total of 1,466 survivors, and the Domestic Violence Resource Center provided 12,236 crisis services to survivors despite challenges due to the pandemic. And whereas domestic violence incidents are some of the most complex and dangerous incidents that law enforcement respond to in our community, putting their lives at risk every day in the belief that a coordinated community response is necessary to support survivors, hold offenders accountable, and work towards ending this cycle of violence. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Tuolleton designates the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent platform to show support for domestic violence advocates, crisis hotline staff, victim service organizations, and prosecutors who hold offenders accountable, and law enforcement officers in our community. It also provides our community the opportunity to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, resources, hope, and assistance to victims, introduced and adopted this 10th day of October 2022.
Thank you very much, Counsel Sacco, and thank you very much for sharing your story. It's very, very inspiring. Next in our agenda is our public comments segment, section. It allows anyone to address the council regarding any issue not on the agenda. We have signup sheets we can take, but we can also take people from the audience who'd like to be acknowledged. Our first person that we're going to have come up and speak with us is Dale Potts, regarding the Veteran Appreciation Breakfast, and as the daughter of a veteran, and the granddaughter of a veteran, and the niece of a veteran, and the cousin, a couple times over, of veterans. This is something that's very near and dear to my heart, so I'm glad you could be with us this evening, and you can share about the breakfast event coming up.
Quite a, quite a military background family you have there.
Yes, very proud to say that.
Council members and staff, I am Dale Potts. I've lived in Tuolleton since 1973. I live at 2,390 Southwest 86th Street. I have a group of veterans here to join with me. We're here to create awareness for the Veterans Appreciation Breakfast that the city is putting on. We have a number of people that will be speaking, and one of them is Bill Manterfeld. If you'll just step forward, kick back. The problem is the, the microphone is, or the telephone, camera's up there. We're looking this way. But Bill, you might remember, Nancy, he was, when we had several, the city was proclamation for the city to become Purple Hearts community. Well, Bill was there, and you read the proclamation, as I remember. Then Frank was sitting right next to you. And you all know Frank is a military veteran himself.
Yes, he is.
He's an Army major in Germany. What Bill's going to talk about at the ceremony is, Bill is an Army Ranger. On his first recon mission, he had, the way that things happened, he thought it was going to be the last day of his life. It's interesting the way he recounts that. So that's a good story. One, another one, lady by the name of April Wicker is going to be talking. Now, she and her husband, well, first she was raised in Tuolleton, and she and her husband both joined the Air Force, and then 20 years later, they're both retired. So she has a lot of experience to talk about. And the third speaker is the Women's Coordinator for the Department, Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. And she's a retired lieutenant colonel for the Marines, but she has both enlisted and officer experience. The, we're going to put up on the screen here, the actual event is going to happen on November 4th, so on a Friday. For all veterans are free. If you bring a guest, it's $12. There we go. That Oneida Poll Center at 8:00 a.m., and you need to make a reservation.
Yes.
You know, the phone number is 503-691-3061.
And it sells out every year, so.
It sells out, yeah. You need to get in and get it, get your name in there, out there. What I like to do is have each of my gentlemen here, they would do a bow face, facing the Do a, do a sound off. Have each one of you, starting with Rocky, give your name and the service branch, and just go down, please, go down the way, Lynn, rather, go down the line.
Ron Christie, United States Marine Corps.
Ron Paulmer, United States Navy.
Len Chauvin, Air Force.
You want me to join in? Dale Potts, US Navy.
Oliver Andrew, US Army.
Jerry Brandon, United States Marine Corps.
Robert Harper, Navy.
I can all, yeah. So again, we need to remind you that the actual event is on November 4th, so on a Friday, and you need to call and make a reservation. Starts at 8:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m. If anybody has any comments or questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I appreciate very much that you all were able to make it this evening. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for your service. I think we're all looking forward to the breakfast, the morning of the 4th.
Frank will be there for sure, because he's CMC.
Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. That was one of the big selling points. Our estimable mayor will be there. The breakfast starts at 8:00 a.m., and people need to call and make arrangement for tickets ahead of time.
Right ahead, yes.
Because it does sell out, because we are a big community that supports our veterans.
That's true. So, thank you.
That is true. I'm into that. So thank you all for coming, and we look forward to seeing you, guys, in a couple weeks.
That's cool.
Yes, sir!
I thought you said they're going to cause trouble.
It's a great, great, great group.
I love that.
I know, I do, too.
He's not going to MC from the pod, I don't think.
No. Do we have anyone else who'd like to make public comment this evening? Good luck following that group. I think not. So we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda will be enacted with one vote. We will ask counselors, if there's anyone who wishes to remove any item from the Consent Agenda for discussion and consideration, if you re, if you wish to request an item to be removed from the Consent Agenda, you should do so during the citizen comment section of the agenda. Things on the Consent Agenda tonight is the consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of September 26, 2022, consideration of resolution number 5646-22, authorizing the city manager to execute a maintenance and operations agreement with Randall and Karen Alstad for Basalt Creek Parkland. Does anyone wish anything to be removed from the Consent Agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. To approve the Consent Agenda as read, all in favor? To approve the Consent Agenda as read, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Thank you. Do not let me forget you, Mayor. Thank you. Out of sight, out of mind. I apologize. Nay, no nays. It's been carried, approved. And then the next item on our agenda, super exciting, is a special report by Tuolton's very own Police Chief, Mr. Greg Pickering. Chief Greg Pickering. I know. Look at that. I know exactly. It's Chief Pickering.
Well, thank you.
We swear you in and then all of a sudden you have to give a big presentation the same night. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Mayor, Council President Grimes, Council, thank you for the kind words tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm very excited to start on this next journey of my career. So and nothing like the annual use of force and stop data report to kick off. Here we go. So as you may or may not remember, back in 2020, after the murder of George Floyd and a lot of the reform issues that came forward, one of the things that the police department said that we would do is come to the council and provide a report of use of force and stop data from the police department throughout the year. So see if this thing will work. All right, here we go. So tonight I just have some, a few data points to talk about, some things to go over in regards to use of force and then our stop data. And again, we'll talk about each one of those programs as we go. And then if there's any questions, and then we'll have a small prevention tip for the end of, towards the end of the year. So just what is considered use of force? So based upon state law and our policy, forces is defined as an application of a physical technique, a tactic, a chemical agent, or a weapon to another person. What is reported? What do we document? So any actual use of force, any use of any weapon, or any display of any weapon of any kind is documented through an official police report through the department. So Tuolton Police Department Use of Force Policy is our Policy 300. This, the policy itself is lengthy. It encapsulates all of the current legal standards and reasonable standards for the use of force by our officers. I think it's important that that we also talk that it does include all of the the provisions that came forward from a lot of the reform work that's been done in regards to policing in the United States. There is language on the duty to intercede, not only by officers but by supervisors. There's, there is the requirement to report any improper use of force immediately to a supervisor. It, our policy does prohibit the use of the carotid restraint unless it is deemed to be deadly force situation. And then officers are, not only are there is it encouraged, but we also are now training our officers in de-escalation tactics and circumstances when they permit, with hopefully the ability to reduce the amount of force that we have to use. So what do the numbers look like? So this is for January through September 1st. So the numbers here you see is there's threshold event, which is 115. So a threshold event is anytime. That's the documentation of any of those displays of force, any of the things that we talked about earlier that we would use. The actual use of physical force by Tuolton officers so far in 2022 is 42 incidents. And you can see down through there's 34 that are control hold. Four is our wrap restraint. So this is really a combative subject that we would have to put into our car. For years, we've used hobbles or other techniques where we would bind somebody's feet behind their back to hook them to the handcuffs to keep them from kicking. The wrap restraint is actually a set of buckles and systems that actually keeps their legs in front of them, that keeps them in a seated position. Actually, the straps themselves will actually pull away. The harder you pull, the farther the straps pull away from your chest. So if you do have excited breathing or those things that allows for the person to breathe. I have actually personally been wrapped a couple of times. And you can easily breathe, you can struggle, you can try to get away, but you actually can't go anywhere because you're completely secure and safe in that situation. We have used the taser three times. Two of those uses were effective, one was not effective. And there's been one punch or kick throughout the year. So I do want to document that all of the incidents are reviewed at multiple levels through the police department, starting with the supervisor, working their way through the division commanders to the chief of police, and all have been found to be within policy and within law. Now you see 115 threshold events and 42 actual incidents of force. Well, in that time, that same time period, Tuolton officers responded to over 11,000 calls for service. That's calls for service and self-initiated activities. So 7,437 public demand calls, that's calls to dispatch either through the non-emergency number or 911 system. 7,400 calls for service, 400 or 4,368 self-initiated activities. So if you look at the number, 42 use of forces, that's a pretty good job done by the officers in this city. If we look at how that compares to the last three years, you can see we are trending a little bit higher than we have in the past, only just because we've dealt with a lot more. I don't want to stereotype, we've dealt with a lot more urban sprawl, we've dealt with a lot more crime that has seems to have been moving from our major metropolitan area into the suburbs. And that's, that is, there's criminal activity that our officers are having to deal with. But those, those numbers are essentially on track for what they've been for the last few years. So stop data. Stop data stands for the Statistical Transparency in Policing. This was a program that was established in 2017 by the Oregon Legislature under House Bill 2355. It requires law enforcement agencies to report demographic, demographic data of any stop to include a vehicle stop or a pedestrian stop. All investigative pedestrian stops, traffic stops, we have to report the race, the sex, the stop type. If a search was conducted, search findings, and then the disposition of any of those of the disposition of the incident itself. So Tuolton is a tier two agency based upon the size of the agency itself, which required us to begin our reporting in July of 2019. We actually got out ahead and began reporting the data back in 2018. So and then again, all the statistical data is reported through the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. Through this, it actually goes through Washington County and then is reported to the state at the state level. So if we look at our stop data, when it, when we talk about race and ethnicity, if you see that the numbers are a little harder to see, they're kind of small here. But 73.6% of the population of the stops that occurred in the first nine months of 2022 were that of a Caucasian or white subject. And these, the demographic categories are the ones that are identified by the state. So we go directly off the state. And actually, the demographics of our stop data pretty well falls within line of the demographics of our community. So I think it's important to realize that we are doing our best to be equal in our enforcement of laws in the state, in the city. Another important piece of this that I feel is important is the disposition of these stops. What do these look like? As you see that almost 50% of our stops are warnings. So we do our best to educate through the enforcement as well as just doing the enforcement. So again, our officers do a very good job of using the discretion of when to cite and when not to cite. You do see that there's a small percentage of arrests and again, a small procession, percentage where no action was taken. I think those no action were taken are the two or three traffic stops that I do a year because I don't know, I don't even know if I remember how to write a ticket. So.
I'm going to be looking for you.
Yeah. So that's the data that I brought based upon stop data and use of force data. So I I know, I know it kind of went through that kind of fast, so I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
Find out. Councilor Brooks has a question.
I do. That, first of all, congratulations to stay in line. Well, first of all, I love that our police department started reporting on this before required, and I've been proud of that since I've been on council. And I was curious, you said there were the threshold events were like 115 out of 11,000 plus calls. And I'm just curious if the number of calls have gone up in the last year, if that's pretty.
Our, our call volume is trending up, not dramatically, but we do, we have seen an increase in calls for service and self-initiated activity in the city over the last couple of years. I think as we come out of the pandemic type era, and people are now more, are out and about more, you know, not, not staying at home as much, some of those self-initiated, self-initiated activities are going up. But we're also seeing as people travel, people go do things more, they're out and unfortunately, as they're out in parking lots and other things, the amount of crime that we're seeing of our, our thefts and theft from vehicles and those things are, are increasing.
My second question, I have three questions. My second question is, is there a different report that comes out another time that gives us sort of the breakdown of the calls, like domestic violence versus crime? Is that this report or is that a future report?
Yeah, that comes out in the annual, we do the annual report at the end of the, that will come after the, the end of the year typically comes January, February, where we'll gather that information and we'll produce the annual report. Yeah.
Sure you spoke that.
Yeah.
My, my third question is now that we're, we're out and about, when, well, my other one was, this will be in the annual report too, but I wonder if you have any idea about how many lifesaving calls your officers were out on in this period of time? Defibrillators.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't have that data with me, but I do know that the officers of the Tuolton Police Department take the lifesaving measures when it comes to a CPR or cardiac type event very seriously. Our, our officers, we have AEDs in almost every car. Our officers respond typically with multiple units to a call for a CPR call. We have a very, a very good reputation with our, our fire partners and our medical partners with TBFNR and Metro West. And that our officers are very much engaged in that, that chain of survival. And so it's something that we are very proud of, and I am very proud of our officers on their response to, to those lifesaving measures.
And then did we get our body camera?
We do. Yes, our body camera system program is fully operational. And all the officers are wearing body cameras anytime that they're out on the road. Yeah, so it's up and running.
And then finally, what do you think your chances are in the pumpkin regatta against the fire department? Or do you think you're just going to need to give them tickets?
Well, you know, the pumpkin regatta has gotten so popular, we're actually partnered with the fire department this year. So the first responder team of TBFNR and the Tuolton Police are actually racing the community this year because there's so many people that want to get into a giant pumpkin and paddle around the lake. So we'll be working together. I will not. I have, I had several volunteers that wanted to jump in and paddle this year. So.
Thank you. So great.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilor Rance?
Thank you very much. Very interesting data, and I love reading, looking at the the different things that you do to me, to follow protocol. Just quick question following up on Councilor Brooks about lifesaving calls that you get. I was listening to I think it was NPR last time, and they said, I want to say North Carolina or South, South Carolina, one of the Carolinas put out a it's, it's that medication that helps someone that's having an overdose. Thank you very much. They actually had like a kind of self-study, you, you, you know, someone, it, it was you, it's, it's out in the, it's in a, not in the public, but like in a space where people have access to that. And they were talking about that can be done in cities, if, if the if you talk to the police and you know, the city comes together. I wonder if you heard of any, anything like that.
I haven't heard of, of that movement. I know that, I know that Narcan or naloxone is, is very popular. It's actually no longer a controlled substance. So with a yeah, with, with a, there's a small waiver you can sign and you can, you can purchase two, two doses from any, typically any pharmacy. I know there is groups that have Narcan or naloxone doses that they will hand out. We now carry them with each of our AEDs. And we have, I mean, we have, we have doses with all of our AEDs. We actually have doses in our, our evidence processing area. And even K9 Tony has two doses of his own because obviously he's, he's sticking his nose into places where he's looking for narcotics. So and now actually, one of the things that they're working on is adding fentanyl as one of the drugs that Tony can detect. So he's not certified to do that, but they are working that direction because fentanyl has become so prevalent in the area and it is so dangerous. So yeah, so Tony actually has two doses of his own just in case. So.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. To know that, like, that information is really good to know. Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilor.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just curious, and I don't need the number data, but just how it's relationship going now with the mental health provider that you're sharing with.
Oh, yeah. So, so the South Cities Mental Health Resource Team with, in conjunction with Life Works Northwest and Washington County Mental Health, that program is amazing. Our clinician is an asset that we, I don't know how we survive without that, that asset in the city. And again, it's in our communities with, shared with, our shared resource with Tigerd and Sherwood Police Departments as well as King City. And you know, we've, we have fought for years to get those type of resources in this end of the county. You know, those, there, those resources are available on our more western side of the county, you know, closer to the county seat, the sheriff's office and the larger agencies and for the smaller agencies. On the eastern side of the county, we really worked and, and it's been a very successful program. Something that we're, we're very proud of that we have our clinician that is housed out of the Tuolton Police Department and people are excited that she's, when she's on duty. And it's, it's interesting how she comes on at 1:00 and it's amazing how many times someone will call at 11:30. And it's like, we call her in early because we need her. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a very good program that we have. For sure.
Excellent. Councilor Brad?
I'm going to focus on the crime part, but I'm wondering, well, first, do we have a is that catalytic converter problem in Tuolton? And what, is there anything we can do? And then my second question is, I've been to a couple of CIO meetings, Ross, or French spoke, and when people ask about crime, it sounds like mostly it's just people breaking into unlocked cars, vehicles. So I'm wondering what the people in our community can do to be safer.
Well, that's a good thing. You're leading right into my prevention tip. So that's just, yeah, it's, it's, so yeah, we're, we're at that time of the year. The summertime is another time that your people leave their windows slightly cracked, their windows down. A lot of the crime that we see are what you could deem as a crime of opportunity. So valuables left in plain view in a vehicle, valuable, vehicles left unlocked. It's amazing to me how many calls we take where with these new keyless vehicles, what we know that just have a key fob, people actually leave their key fob in their vehicles overnight. And you know, that anybody can just walk up and open a car, drive away with a car. So again, the, the prevention piece is hide your valuables, park in well-lit areas if you're parking someplace after dark. You know, make sure that you're taking your keys with you, you're locking your doors, you're rolling your windows up. Those, those things are super important. The catalytic converter theft is still in the area. There's been a lot of work done regionally to try to address the, the even as far as the purchase of the precious metals that are inside. So that there is a Washington County Metal Task Force. They've been working diligently with some of the junkyards and tow companies and other places that are buying the metals, the metal recycling locations to be really strict about what they're taking in and how they're taking them in. You may have seen the Beaverton Police Department broke a very large ring in the Beaverton area. Thousands and thousands of catalytic converters that had been stolen in this region. We've seen a slowdown in that, but it's still prevalent. There, there's a lot of things that people are doing to, you know, protect their assets. You know, there's devices that people are adding to their cars. A lot of cars are coming now with skid plates on the bottom to protect the, the emission systems and those things. So you know, the unfortunate side is that we are still seeing, you know, a spike in property crime. And I think that that goes along with just some of the other homeless or houselessness issues that we have, some of the addiction problems that we have. And so again, this, this is a holistic problem that we need to really take a holistic approach to try to, to get in front of some of these issues.
Mayor Boebinik, did you have a question? With Chief Pickering?
Not at this point, Mark. Any update you have, Chief, about from the Washington County Sheriff and the pod that they had to shut down, the staffing, is it still shut down?
I have not heard that that's been reopened. So as far as I know, yes, that, that dormitory pod is still closed.
I had, oh, no, go ahead.
I just want to add, you had mentioned Fire Department and Station 34. I was there last weekend. And I, I specifically asked about the relationship with the Tuolton Police Department. And they sang your praises. So I just want to take this opportunity to pass that along. And that's, and working with the Tuolton Police Department is one of the perks, they said, of getting to be at Station 34, because they're, you guys have such a great partnership. I did go on one call where the police department was there and just the professionalism and seeing the two, two departments work together was amazing. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to pass that along, that they really sang your praises. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for your job well done.
Yeah, and we cherish the relationship that we have with Station 34. And now that we're building with Station 39. Yeah. And we, we cherish the relationship that we have with Station 34 and, and now that we're building with Station 39, um, our TBF and, TBF and our partners are phenomenal. And, uh, we have a, we're really lucky to have a great station house and have some, some great leadership there, uh, in Station 34 that, that we've been able to foster over the years. So.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
That would take us back to Council Communications, but I think we sort of worked our way through that. Was there, I was just going to say, if anybody remembered something.
Because we just had a police chief that, um, at the pumpkin regatta on Sunday, the, um, police foundation will be there and the police foundation, we try to make a connection with the community. We, uh, support the retirement program for Tony. We've helped the AEDs for the police. And so, um, we're going to have our big duck raffle where you can buy a little duck and then the TVFNR and the police are going to race against the public and the first five ducks picked will get a prize. So, um, the first prize is $700 and if you get one duck for $10 or 11 for 100 at tuCPF.org.
Well done. Well done. How about, I'll come right back to you, Councilor Saka. Work our way in.
Uh, just a, a quick reminder that we have a very important, uh, Parks Bond on the ballot. Um, the deadline to register to vote or check your voter's registration, please, um, is October 18th. Uh, make sure that you are in active status and if not registered, register to vote. Um, and, um, one thing that, um, we've, we've learned through some of these conversations that, that some people might not be aware that you can just vote on one thing on the ballot if you want. So. Um, if that one thing is parks, um, vote for parks. Uh, and, um, we will be at the pumpkin regatta handing out these beautiful stickers, um, that, uh, support the Parks, uh, bond. Um, so we hope to see you there, um, at Pumpkins and Pints, at the Regatta Run and at the actual regatta, walking around, answering all questions. So if you have any questions, find us. We'll be wearing t-shirts, um, that say, vote for parks.
And Councilor Brooks? Thank you. Um, I have a few pumpkin regatta announcements. I want to remember that Rotary is also sponsoring the Regatta Run. It's a 5K run or walk. You can walk. I'll be walking. Um, so please sign up and, and support the run. And then the, um, the Twalton Sustainability Network is doing a native plant sale, um, Saturday and Sunday from nine to five. And the lot right next to the police department, between the police department and, uh, Boone's Ferry. So you can pull right into the, uh, police department parking lot and come pick up plants and do some fall planting after the, um, regatta. The arts committee, um, some members of the arts committee will be, uh, their theater people and they will have full real um, pirate costumes that they will be dressed in for photo opportunities. So if you see a pirate, take a picture. Um, and finally, I understand that me, myself and I, Bridget Brooks, is going to be in a pumpkin. So if you want to come see me in a pumpkin, if that kind of floats your boat, ha, ha, ha. Um, and I might be in a pirate costume. I'm just saying, um, I'll be in the second heat of the pumpkin regatta. And I'm very excited about it. Um, I think that's all the news that's fit to print. It's up our thinking, everybody that's been working so hard on the Parks Bond Committee and I am going to carve a pumpkin that has that in it. So wish me luck on that. And you can see it at our raffle tables at two events. Thank you. And I think Councilor, who are you?
Just a quick announcement about a job fair for people of all, of job age. It'll be at Byram, excuse me, Bridgeport Elementary School on Saturday from four to 6:30. There will be six to eight, um, employment agencies, including, um, WorkSource Oregon for the ability to, um, do all sorts of, um, job interview skills, resume building, that sort of thing. It will, it is, um, certainly every, it's every, it is open to everyone and each, uh, person, group, vendor that'll be there will have a Spanish-speaking person at the table. So that is really the focus of this event. There'll be some food and some fun and there will also be financial education about how to start bank accounts and, and, um, being able to understand, um, our banking department that a little bit better for people who that is not their, um, uh, norm. And so if you're interested in that, you can go on the Twalton Together website and it shows under events, but it's at Bridgeport Elementary from four to 6:30 this Saturday, the 15th.
Fantastic. Uh, Mayor Boobinick? Any announcements, communication?
No announcements from me.
Oh, okay. And I guess the last announcement would be that the weather for this weekend is supposed to be somewhere near sunny and 80. So I don't know how it gets any better for the pumpkin regatta weekend than sunny and 80 in Twalton, which in the middle of October. I know, it's crazy. So anyway, all right. Well, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor? Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.